Brother in, uh, brother Linden, if you can pray us into tonight's study, and we'll go on ahead and get started, beloved brethren.
Okay, alright everybody, um, let's just bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we know you are all-knowing. You have plans. And we know this is orchestrated by your hand. And we're so glad, um, for you to make us witnesses of your goodness. And we definitely worship your son for whom we we have recognized as our Savior. Everything is done through him. The whole creation was done through him, this whole redemption was done to him. And we're so thankful, Lord, we just wanna have, uh, more revelation. We wanna have a deeper insight of who you are intimately. And as we take a journey through these scriptures, let everybody's hearts burn with understanding. Open our minds, open our hearts, so we can have a clearer and a brighter understanding of who you are. So whatever curtain that needs to be put aside, please put it aside, for we do bow down to you. We long to see the fruit of your reconciliation. So again, Father, bless up your body here in this Bible study, and let us dig in. And let us have sweet fellowship under your name. In Christ Jesus, amen.
Amen. I just wanted to, uh, quickly comment on where brother Linden in his prayer said that God has provided salvation for us to draw us unto himself. How true, how true, how true those words are. Brother Linden and I are going to actually, um, together bring you the intro to the book of Numbers. After which brother Linden will carry us through chapters one through three. And at the end of brother Linden's session, I will review last week's section of Luke chapters twenty-three and twenty-four. And even as I'm speaking about that, I'm welling up inside due to the fact that this the whole Bible speaks of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, is written in Hebrews. The volume of the book, it is written of me. But you come across certain passages that just yells of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And Luke chapter twenties-three, uh, chapters twenty-three and twenty-four does just that. Because at this point, at this pivotal point in history, two thousand years ago, is when our redemption was made sealed at our Lord's death on Calvary's cross, the shedding of blood and water from his side. So without further ado, brother Linden, please bring us into that wonderful Old Testament book, Numbers.
Okay, um, we see that Numbers is right after, uh, Leviticus, we had a journey through Leviticus. And it was, uh, a challenging, uh, journey. And, uh, right now, we're in the, um, we're in the latest stages of, uh, the Israelites', uh, journey through the wilderness. And, um, just going through some scriptures, we, we see that God always typifies himself as the husband or the bridegroom. And we, the people, are considered his bride. And, uh, because of our, our faithless nature, we see that we have, it has come to the point where our bridegroom died in our place to redeem us. And we know that, uh, Moses faced many challenges. I'm just giving you a preview. You know, uh, faced many challenges, Korah, this opposition, uh, the, uh, king, I don't know the name, but I know, uh, there's a, there was a king that wanted to incite Balak to, uh, bring a curse on the Israelites in their journey. And we see that now, displayed in our lives, we see that, um, people persecute us, they call us bigots or narrow-minded. And it's unfortunate, but then again, Jesus encourages us to continue standing up for what is right and what is true. And, uh, you know, if the world loved us, obviously, the world loves their own. And Jesus clearly, uh, insisted that no student is above his master. If they hated him first, they're definitely, definitely going to hate us. So, um, you know, right now, the first few chapters, the first four chapters are just, um, pretty much a census of the the twelve tribes of Israel, Israel, um, the Levites. And I, I mean, we can read that, but I know you'll have a general sense of what a census is. You know, we have census, we have something coming in mail, and they, they wanna have a census of how many members are in your household. So i- i- it stems from the Bible. It's just, um, just, um, putting in together, uh, the, the amount of people, or groups, or tribes. And, um, this is how everything was put in order as they took the journey in this wilderness. And I want you to understand also that whenever, um, I'm gonna read Isaiah fifty-four, I'm going to read Hosea, and you're gonna see a lot of similarities again. As God being the husband, he's always faithful. He always took, um, Israel by the hand, and he would stricken thirst, um, on his unfaithful bride. But he always has intentions of expressing mercy. And even though for a moment he will turn his back on his people out of anger, disappointment, he always expresses faithfulness. And that's why, you know, you read Lamentations, chapter three, "Great is your faithfulness. Uh, your compassion's never failed and new every morning." So now we realize we are no longer depending on our faithfulness, but we're depending on God's faithfulness as he is drawing us to his son. Again, uh, some people say, "Well, you know, I'm human, I have free will." Yes, you do have free will. But I'll always tell people, you do not have sovereign will. It's God's sovereign choice. Uh, Jesus clearly said to his disciples that, "You didn't choose me, I chose you." So we are, um, ecstatic to know that God has chosen us to be members of the church, the body, which is better known as his bride. Um, so now, you know, I, I, I know that, uh, there are many, we, we can talk about Korah, we can talk about, um, the opposition that Moses faced. We can talk about the, uh, this, this, the twelve spies, ten of them came back with a negative report. And they were saying, "Hey, you know, these people are, are huge, and we're like, we're like ants compared to them." And only Joshua and Caleb came back with, um, with a, um, well, with a positive report. And they, because of their faith, they said, "We can take these people, 'cause God is with us, we'll swallow them up as bread, and, uh, God will never forsake us." But because of the people, um, acceptance of, uh, the ten of those spies, for each day, they scoped the land for forty days. So because of their unbelief, God said, "I'm gonna add a year." For each day, they needed to spy on this land, Jericho, and it was forty years. Um, we know that the Lord Jesus Christ was led to the wilderness, and he was tempted for forty days in the wilderness. So you can see a lot of parallels. You know, God may have, um, turned his back on us, but through Yeshua Emmanuel, God with us, the angel who has the Father's name, will always, will never leave or forsake his redeemed bride. And he, again, literally laid down his life to set her free from the law of sin and death, which can only bring wrath. So now we're no longer bound to the old covenant law, which is other, um, known as the Law of Mount Sinai. Now we are bound to our husband, our bridegroom, Jesus Christ, through faith. Okay, um, well, you know, we can, we can just give some, uh, we have, uh, again, just to give you a brief review, I mean, this is, this is skim through this census in chapter one, number chapter one, and then there's the arrangements of the tribal camps. The Levites, which we know came from the loins of Abraham when he gave a tenth to Melchizedek. And as you know, as, uh, as a token of respect for that gesture, God gave ten percent back to the Levites, because the Levites were in the loins of Abraham when he gave a tenth to Melchizedek. Melchizedek, the high, um, the priest of, the prince of Salem. Uh, the Chalathites, the Gershenites, the Merriites, and then the numbering of the Levi clans. So, um, um, everybody's organizing these tribes, and, and now the, the camp is being assembled as they take this journey in the wilderness. So just to give you, uh, again, a beautiful picture of what God intends, what God's intentions are. Again, we'll, and we'll turn to Isaiah fifty-four. And you're gonna see that, yes, we, what makes us adulterous? When we love someone or something more than God, we, we may say, "Well, I don't bow down to, uh, this, so I don't" engaging in, uh, a formal worship of this. But have your heart set on more than God makes you adulterous. In Old Testament times, obviously, they had idols that they put together and they worshiped a creature. Oh, there's, there's so many idols, there's so many gods. I mean, it could be materialism, it could be, uh, worldly, worldly success. It could be the addiction of, um, of acceptance of your there's so many forms of adultery. And God wants to be the only desire of our hearts. And we see that even ourselves could be our God. We can look upon our strength as our God, our intelligence as our God. But when we, we realize that God wants us for himself, it's not out of selfishness, it's not out of being insecure or being controlling. God knows that as the husband, he wants to protect his bride, which is us. So we need to be mindful of that. Okay, so I'm gonna go to Isaiah chapter fifty-four, just to give you a, a picture of us being the bride, and then I'm gonna take a little journey to Hosea. And you're gonna see a lot of similarities. And, uh, I, I've been, I'm intrigued by it, and I'm gonna read this to you. So I'm gonna read, uh, I, uh, chapter fifty-four. And it's going to be, uh, verse five. Okay, it is written, "For your maker is your husband; the Lord Almighty is his name. The Holy One is your Redeemer. He is called the God of all the earth, call you back as if you were a wife deserted and distressed in spirit. A wife who married young only to be rejected, says your God. For a brief moment, I'll do, but with deep compassion, I will bring you back. In a surge of anger, I hid my face from you for a moment, but with everlasting kindness, I will have compassion on you, says the Lord your Redeemer." So we see that, yes, we're typified as the bride, and he's the bridegroom. And I'm going to take, I didn't mention this to you before, but we can go, um, we can go to Jeremiah, chapter three, again. God refers to himself as the husband, and Israel is the bride. Okay. So now, this is what the Lord says, this is, um, Jeremiah, chapter three, verse eleven. And it goes down to it, it, it's lengthy, but I'll read it. And, uh, it's to, uh, verses through twenty. And here we read. I'll leave, I'll go to verse eleven. "The Lord said to me, 'Faithless Israel is more righteous than unfaithful Jerusalem. Go proclaim this message toward the north. Return, faithless Israel, declares the Lord. I will frown on you no longer, for I am faithful, declares the Lord. I will not be angry forever, only acknowledge your guilt. You have rebelled against the Lord your God, you have scattered your fa- you have scattered your favors to foreign gods under every spreading tree, and have not obeyed me, declares the Lord. Return, faithless people. I am your husband. I will choose you, one from a town and two from a clan, and bring you to Zion. Then I will give you shepherds after my own heart,' meaning people who will teach them the word and the commandments and the laws, who will lead you with knowledge and understanding. In those days when your numbers have increased greatly in the land, declares the Lord, people will know the ark of the covenant of the Lord. It will never enter their minds or be remembered, it will not be missed, nor will another, another one be made. At that time, they will call Jerusalem the throne of the Lord, and all the nations will gather in Jerusalem to honor the name of the Lord. No longer will they follow their stubbornness, fo- follow the stubbornness of their evil hearts. In those days, the people of Jerusalem, people of Israel, and together they will come from nor- from the northern land to the land I have, I gave your ancestors as an inheritance. I myself said, 'How gladly would I treat you like my children and give you a pleasant land, the most beautiful inheritance of any nation. I thought you would call me father, and not turn away from following me, but like a woman unfaithful to, so you, Israel, fall to me.'" Um, again, there's an old covenant that he's faithful, and the brothers of the law, the Israelites, were faithless. Now there's a new covenant, and then it's another demonstration of God being faithful. "I know you can obey every stroke of the law. The law was instituted to convict us of our sin. That's why we uphold the law to this day, because the law is going to say, 'You of human flesh have weakened what the law intended, but brings wrath.'" So the only one who can take is our Lord and Savior, our Creator, the King of glory, Jesus Christ. And he laid down his life for us, his bride. And now we have risen with him, and we're covered in him. And, uh, again, you always see that God demonstrates his faithfulness. Even when he's upset, when even when he's angered because of their adulterous ways, worshiping other gods or not following his ways, you always demonstrate faithfulness to his people. And you can go further on in verse twenty-two of Jeremiah, chapter three. Again, I'm gonna text all these, uh, verses, so when you have your personal time, you wanna be intimate with God, you can eat these verses. Uh, and again, he says, "Return, faithless people. I will cure you of your backsliding. Yes, we will call you are the Lord our God," as they said. So we know it's a dynamic of a relationship. So now when we see married, you know, the husband, i- i- it is two ankles at it. God, the Father and Son are u- in union, and Jesus refers to Father as the husband, and he's the bond, the beauty of God, the, the, the glory of God.
I lost the sound.
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? If anybody can't hear you, please let me know.
Yep, I can hear you, baby brother.
Okay, so now we see that, you know, Jesus inherits the name from the Father, just the way when there's a marriage taking place, and the woman takes, inherits the name of her husband, and now they are joined as one. It's a reflection of God's image. Another angle, we can look at it as the husband is supposed to represent Christ, which is faithful to our bride. And she's bound to us. And she, and as a demonstration of faithfulness, obviously, she would not look at another man or lie with another man. And now we see, um, let's take a journey to Hosea, chapter two. We see that, uh, shows Hosea to share in his sufferings, and he wanted him to understand how he endures the unfaithfulness of Israel and her unlawful children. And, uh, I'll read this to you. And it's not saying that, hey, let's just see how God's grace abounds when we are adulterous, or no. Um, but it shows again, the beautiful demonstration of faithfulness to his unfaithful bride. And I'll jump to, uh, chapter three of Hosea briefly, and then we'll start, um, then we'll go to, uh, number chapter five. So here we read Hosea, chapter two, verse two. "Rebuke your mother, Uchar, for she is not my wife, and I am not her husband. Let her remove the adulterous look from her face and the unfaithfulness from between her breasts. Otherwise, I will strip her naked and make her as bare as one as on the day she was born. I'll make her like a desert, turn her into a parched land, and slay her with thirst. I will not show my love to her children, because they are the children of adultery. Their mother has been unfaithful and has conceived them in disgrace. She said, 'I will go after my lovers, who give me my food and my water, my wool and my linen, my olive oil and my drink. Therefore, I'll walk her path with thorn bushes, wall her in so that she cannot find her way. She will chase after her lovers but not catch them. She will look, look for them but not find them. Then she will say, 'I will go back to my husband, as at first, but then I was better off than now.'" You see the similarity with the prodigal son, he, he abandoned, he left it and took the inheritance squandered and wild living, and then finally he came to his senses and said, "I think I should go back to my father's house, 'cause all the servants there are clothed and, um, my father has him in good provision." So then she will say, "I'll get, again, then she will say, 'I will go back to my husband as at first, but then I was better off than now.'" She has not acknowledged that I was the one who gave her the grain, the new wine and oil, who lavished on her the silver and gold, shabail. Therefore, I will take away my grain when it ripens and my new wine when it's ready. I will take back my wool and my linen, cover her naked body." Now, we look, we see this language here, and I, I discussed with Brother Scott, um, just yesterday. And I did, you know, you, you hear the story about God, Adam and Eve for eating the fruit from the tree of Nausicaä, good and evil. And we often wondered, okay, I mean, I'll say personally, I often wondered like, how, what's going through God? How can he ask such a question? Who told you that you're naked? Isn't it obviously that they'd never had clothes? But you know, God and Spirit, carnal minds may misinterpret him. Said, "Hey, eat my flesh and drink my blood." But out of the bad, we probably think, is this God, is this, this man preaching cannibalism? No, he's speaking in spirit. And you know, when he meant, "Eat my flesh and drink my blood," it means have fellowship with me. And you know, we see that demonstrated when you're courting your girlfriend, and you, you have dinner together, and you're fellowship, and you're trying to find out who she is, and she's trying to find out who you are. But now as we again, God is, um, showing this that he, when Adam and Eve were sent, sin separates us from God. We're separated from life. We're separated from righteousness. And we are now naked and miserable. And I even go further. Since the, since loose against God, he is definitely, he's naked. And he's no lo- longer clothed in God's presence. There's no intimacy between him and God. There's a difference between God being omnipresent, obviously, he's, he sees darkness as light. But the presence I'm talking about, the righteousness I'm talking about is to receive with God. And so then we see curtains, and you see that God has, has shunned us, because now our destruction unfolds. And, um, I will go to, uh, Job, chapter twenty-six, verse six. So then again, you, you'll see, because you're not in sweet fellowship with me, and because you're not under my provision and my guidance, you're naked, miserable, blind, everything, pretty much you're nothing without me. And that's not to say that in a condescending manner. I mean, we see it right now. Um, that we are not clothed in God's presence. But thankfully, Christ came down, and now when we are clothed in Christ, we no longer stand. And so, journey, I'm gonna go back to Hosea. Go to Job, chapter twenty-six, verse six. Job, chapter twenty-six, verse six. And it's a short verse, but it, it does open up a lot of doors for us to understand the severity of being separated from God. It is written, "The realm of the dead is naked before God." So when we say, we go to other chapters, I think it's in Romans, "You cannot please God from the realm of flesh." Even Jesus says, "No flesh can inherit the kingdom of God." Why? Because the realm of the dead is naked. And there's nothing but shameful destruction. Destruction is inevitable. I don't care who you are, how savvy, how wise you may be, how independently strong you may be, it will not last. Anything that falls short of eternity is, is destruction. And we see that And we see that in this world. It starts out good. It smells good, it looks good, it feels good, but then eventually. As people will say, all good things come to an end, but you know what? It's just, and it's, it's just uh the reality of being separated from God. And then we see here in verse six. Destruction lies uncovered. So when Adam and Eve try to cover their destruction, they were murdered. And now they're on the verge of being completely destroyed, but they don't. Their destruction is exposed, so they try to cover themselves with fake leaves. But we see when Jesus cursed the fig tree, his not, there's no fruit. So we may have Judaism, we may have a practice of the Hare Krishna. We may have the practice of the Muslim faith. Again, Buddhism, all these man-made religions. Could never cover our destruction. Our destruction is exposed in God's eyes. The only way we can be fully is being in Christ Jesus. That's the only way. We're no longer naked. So when we have Christ's Spirit living in us, we are clothed, we have wedding clothes, we don't have grave clothes. Or better yet, we're, we're no longer exposed, we're no longer uncovered. And there's only shame and destruction exposed when we are separated from God. Nothing good at all. So, you know, when we see the Bible talking about being clothed and, and wool. It means that we are being clothed in Christ. We are no longer mortal, we're going to be immortal. That's who God is. So let's go back to uh Hosea. And just to show you the, the beauty, the illustration that God wanted to. Uh, reveal to us through Hosea. So you know, he says, I will take back my wool and my linen intended to cover her naked body. So now I'll expose her lewdness before the eyes of her lovers. None will take her out of my hands. I will stop all her celebrations, her yearly festivals, new moons, her Sabbath days, all her appointments. I will ruin her vines and her fig trees, which she said that are, were her pay from her lovers. I will make them like a thicket, and wild animals will devour them. I will punish her for the days. She burned incest to the bales. She decked herself with rings and jewelry and went after her lovers, but me, she forgot. Therefore, I am now going to allure her. I will lead, see, he's always demonstrating no matter, all the. Adultries that she committed against God. He always says, I'm now going to allure her. I will lead her into the wilderness and speak tenderly to her. There I will give her back her vengeance, and will make the valley of Acher a door of hope. There she will respond as in the days of her youth, as in the day she came up out of Egypt. So we, 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 we see that again, in that day declares the Lord, you will call me my. You will no longer call me my master. Isn't that what he said to his disciples? You know, you, you, you no longer be servant, but I'm gonna call you friends, because only my, only the friends know the, the in- intimacy. Intimate mysteries of God. I'm no longer calling you servants, I'm calling you friends. This way, in this language, he says. I am no longer going to have you call me master, but I'm gonna call, you will call me as your husband. And now we see another picture of God's faithfulness demonstrated through Hosea. And then it's in chapter three, the Lord said to me, go show your love to your wife again. Though she is loved by another man and is an adulteress, love her as the Lord loves the Israelites. Though they turned to other gods and loved their, the sacred raisin cakes. So I bought her for fifteen shekels of silver. And about a homer and a lefik of barley. Then I told her. You are to live with me many days. You must not be a prostitute or be intimate with any man. And I will behave the same way towards you. So yeah, we, we've gone over uh the, the clause uh, um, you know. A man, i- if he divorces his wife except for sexual morality. And marries another, commits adultery or makes his wife a victim of adultery, well, we see now. The seriousness of a marriage union, and as men, we are supposed to demonstrate. That, that like resilient love for our bride. And I know. Maybe because we're human, we cannot take the pain of being rejected and, and the sexual morality. But we see that God always demonstrates faithfulness to his bride. And uh if we understand that, we'll see the, the beauty. Yet the pain that's involved, but we see the beauty of faithfulness. I think that now in this society, you know, the moment we find discomfort or we don't have any convenience and. Or this person is not uh so-called elevating me or giving me comfort. You know, that's when we are self-seeking. And I, I talk to my, I will, I ask questions. And then what was, what really intrigued me was that he said, love is not self-seeking. It's, it's never going to dishonor. Even when you're being dishonored, you know, you always. Ask God, give me that love of God, so I can demonstrate to others. It may not be just your wife, if you're, if you're married, it could be demonstrated through uh broken relationships. In your family, but always show uh the faithfulness that God has shown us. And I'm not gonna say, you know, we don't say, I'm have boundaries. We don't have, uh, we, we're not gonna compromise, no. But we'll always show faithfulness. By the Holy Spirit, because we of ourselves cannot carry that out. So I wanted to show you that um in Numbers, in the wilderness, and it's, it's God just, to me. And from what I'm reading, God is detoxing his people. You know, he took them out of Egypt. But now he's gotta take Egypt out of them. He's detoxing them, this, they were worshipping other gods, and they said, you know what? We love the food here, even though we're in bondage. And you know, that correlates with us. You know, we're so accustomed to this world, we just say, hey, man, imagine if we just. Uh, hit the jackpot, we win like fifty million dollars or five hundred million dollars, well, we'll be good. But then you're still in prison. This is, this world is Egypt. Um, all our sexual cravings, all the, all the. The pleasures that we have bowed down to, that's what's keeping us. In bondage. To sin and death. So we can talk about the numbering of the Levi clans, and I'm gonna go to chapter five of Numbers. Numbers, chapter five. The Lord said to Moses, command the Israelites to send away from the camp anyone who has a defiling skin disease. Or a discharge of any kind, or who is ceremonially unclean because of a dead body. And um as we journey through Leviticus, no priests were supposed to tou- touch a dead body. He would be considered ceremonially unclean unless it was a family member, his wife, somebody was. To him, but if it's somebody else, he couldn't um touch that dead person. Send away female and uh male alike, send them outside the camp, so they will not defile their camp. Where I dwell among them. The Israelites did so, they sent the camp. They did just, just as God, uh, as the Lord had instructed Moses. This kind of um stirs my memory uh. If we turn to, I believe, First Corinthians. And uh it talks about um. A brother who's. Un- unlawful, and this is what the reaction should be, and you know, when we. Send somebody outside of a congregation, it's not because of uh. It's not that uh we are resentful to that person, but we want that person to be uh, to be corrected. I don't know if you can help me here, Brother Scott, I know it's in First Corinthians, it's, it's lawful brother, and they said, hand him over to Satan. And he'll be cleansed.
Yes, I'll look that up.
It just, it just came to my mind. I'll look this book, this bears me, um, this bears me, folks. Okay, I found it, it's First Corinthians, chapter five, verse five. There we read. Um, dealing with a case of incest, so I, I'm gonna read from um. Verse one through five, okay? It's actually reported that there's sexual amor. And of a kind that even pagans do not tolerate. A man is sleeping with his father's wife? And shouldn't you rather have gone into mourning and have put out your fellowship? The man who has been doing this? Though I am not physically present, I'm with you in spirit, as one who is, I'm present with you in this way. I've already passed judgment in the name of our Lord Jesus on the one who has been doing this. So when you are assembled and I am with you in spirit, and the power of our Lord Jesus is present. Hand this man over to Satan for the destruction of the flesh, so that his spirit may be saved on the day of the Lord. So, but you see the parallel, they, they were. Cast out people who had these skill, um, these skin ailments. It's just pretty much a physical foreshadow of us spiritually, we're sick. Some have uh a disease of sexual morality, homosexuality, promiscuity. Incest. And. When God says, be separate, it's for our protection. But as a believer, we don't do that out of. Do that because, again, as it is written, we want this person to be spared when Jesus comes. Let, hand this over, hand him over to Satan. And you probably say, what is he talking, my hand this person over to Satan, isn't that our enemy? But you know, God uses messages of Satan to buffet us, to keep us from being puffed up. Especially if someone is revealing, receiving revelations from God. To keep us from being both full, you know what? God will use. A messenger of Satan to buffet us, so that we will rely on his grace alone. Cause he said, his grace is sufficient. My power is made perfect in weakness. We see that exemplified in Elijah's life. He had a great victory. Against the false prophets, and he worshiped Baal. Big victory, brought fire down, he asked God to bring fire down to his alt- um, the altar, and it burned, he even had water. In the altar, and flames came from the sky, and, and the, the um altar was um in flames. And he killed many, many false prophets. Beautiful victory, but then that messenger of Satan. Was Jezebel. She sent a threatening letter. I'm not gonna say word for word, but she said, hey, you know what you did to my promise? I'm gonna kill you. And he was struck. He wanted to take his life, but God allowed that, so he would not be puffed up. So you know, in this journey, you know, um, when you're having a deeper intimate relationship with God. You're going to see hardship after hardship. It could be inside, it could be outside, but it's God fine tuning you. He's letting you know. That he's transformed to the likeness of his son, Jesus Christ. Jesus learned obedience from what he suffered, so yes, we are not exempt from that, and it's painful. But again, as it says in Hebrews, chapter twelve. The plan is pleasant at the time, but painful. Later on, however, it produces a harvest of pro- um righteousness and peace for those who have been trained by it. So this is definitely a sign that you're not illegitimate. If you're illegitimate, you're not gonna be disturbed. That was not gonna attack you. So, again, that's why when we read the scriptures, we see. That again, God's way of purging, you know, we said, we don't as doctors, but that, yes, we go out and. And we plead to people, we tell them of the good news, but that doesn't mean that we're supposed to um have that intimacy. So this was to the church. So again, Paul was saying, I'm in spirit, but how can you say that you're a brother of mine and you, you committing these acts? I, I'm not, there's other verses where it says, don't sit down and eat with this man. The idolaters and the, those who are greedy and drunk, it don't, don't associate with this, don't associate yourself with this person. Now, it's not saying that I don't like you, it's a way of protection. Um, we see that also uh exemplified in um later on. When we, God willing, when we get to there, when we get to the book of Joshua, that there's many, there were, a, a man and his family had to be purged. Protect Israel. So we have to look at the um, we have to look at the community that God is protecting. And of course, we want those who have sinned to repent, come to their senses, and come back on. In good measure. So I just want you to see how there's parallels from, between the Old Testament and the New Testament. Nothing new under the sun, it's just, I, I, I uh, now I finally got it. The Old Testament is the New Testament concealed, and the New Testament is the Old Testament revealed. Alright, so let's go back to Numbers, chapter five. Okay. The Lord said to Moses, say to the Israelites, any man or woman. Who wrongs another in any way, and so is unfaithful to the Lord, is guilty. And must confess the sin they have committed. They must make full restitution for the wrong they have done. Add a fifth of the value to it, and give it all to the person they have wronged. But if that person has no close relative to whom restitution can be made for the wrong. The restitution belongs to the Lord and must be given along with the ram. With which atonement is made for the wrongdoer. All the sacred contributions that Israelites bring to the priests will belong to him. Sacred things belong to their owners, but what they give to the priests will belong to the priest. Now, here we go again, we're, we're talking about uh unfaithful wives. The test of the unfaithful wife. And uh it, in this time, you know, anybody who has suspicion of his wife being unfaithful. Or being intimate with another man, this was, um, this was the protocol. Then the Lord said to Moses, speak to the Israelites and say to them, if a man's wife goes astray and is unfaithful to him. So that another man has sexual relations with her, and this is hidden from her husband, and her impurity is undetected. Since there's no witness against her, and she has not been caught in the act. And if feelings of jealousy come over her husband, and he suspects his wife, and she is impure. Or if he is jealous and suspects her, even though she is not impure. Then he is to take his wife to the priest. He must also take an offering of a tenth of. An ephah of barley flour on her behalf. He must not pour. He must not pour olive oil on it or put incest on it. Because it is a grain offering for jealousy, a reminder offering to draw attention to wrongdoing. The priest shall bring her and have her stand before the Lord. Then he shall take some holy water in a clay jar and put some dust from the tabernacle floor into the water. After the priest has had the woman, but he shall loosen her hair and place. In her hands, the reminder offering, the grain offering for jealousy, while he himself holds a bit of water that brings a curse. Then the priest shall put the woman under oath and say to her. If no other man has had sexual relations with you and you have not gone astray and become impure while married to your husband. Water that brings a curse not harm you. But if you have gone astray while. And you have made yourself impure by sexual relations with a man other than your husband. Here the priest is to put. This curse. May the Lord cause you to become a curse among your people when he makes your womb miscarry and your abdomen swell. May this water that brings a curse enter your body so that your abdomen swells or your womb miscarries. Then the woman is to say, amen, so be it. The priest is to write these curses. On a scroll and then wash them off into the bitter water. He shall make her, um, make the woman drink the bitter water that will um brings a. And this water that brings a curse and causes bitter suffering will enter her. The priest is to take from her hands the grain offering for jealousy, wave it before the Lord and bring it to the altar. The priest is then to take a handful of grain. Handful of the grain offering as a memorial offering and burn it on the altar. Alter that he is to have the woman drink the water. If she has made herself impure and been unfaithful to her husband, this will be the result. When she is made to drink the water that brings a curse and causes bitter suffering, it will enter her. Her abdomen will swell and her. Right, and she will become a curse. If however, the woman has not made herself impure. And she will be cleared of guilt and will be able to have children. This then is the law of jealousy. When a woman goes astray and makes herself impure while married to her husband. Or when feelings of jealousy come over a man because he suspects his wife. The priest is to have her stand before the Lord and is to apply this entire law to her. The husband will be innocent of any wrongdoing, but the woman will bear, will bear the. Consequences of her sin. I'm gonna jump back to uh, um Exodus. And the jealous husband. Is uh, definitely. Another uh picture of. Our bridegroom, God. And I'm gonna read this to you. It's in Exodus, chapter thirty-four. Fourteen. Again, committing adultery against God is worshiping other gods, loving yourself more than God. Having idols before God, whatever you uphold in your heart more than God. Is being unfaithful to him. So break down, this is verse fifth, um, four. Team thirteen through fourteen. Break down their altars, smash their sacred stones and cut down their share of poles. Do not worship any other god, for the lord whose name is jealous. Is a jealous god. So we see there, uh, we, uh, people. We are married to God. And that, this is a portrait of uh, of relationship with God. And we see that God takes relationship very, very seriously. And we see that. If it took the extent of making. The son a sacrifice. To be in union with him, to reconcile us to himself through Yeshua. That shows that not only does he have us in high esteem and they're valuable in his eyes, he takes relationship. Seriously. And rightfully so. You know, in this culture, y- y- we see um, unfaithfulness everywhere. It's it's exemplified in sports, it's exemplified in marriages, it's exemplified in businesses. There's no loyalty, there's no faithfulness. We refer to these terms, every man for himself. Or as they would say, you know how it is, man. So we, we really God for his faithfulness and. I'm just thankful that with this new covenant here. We don't have to rely on ourselves. It was demonstrated in the Old Testament, but right now we see. That if we believe the good news. It's not based on. We do. It's all based on faith. Faith in Christ's work. Not work of ourselves. And I'll, I'll close with this um. This verse, cause I know a lot of people think, well. With this faith, I can um, I can obey the ten commandments perfectly. Uh, I I. It's kind of this, it's kind of a. An oxymoron when people refer to that as a way. But it clearly says, as we read, um, I know Brother Scott went over this first, but Jesus set us free. From the law of sin and death, because the law only brings wrath. And we know that Jesus, our Lord, our Creator, our King. Took the wrath from the Father on that day. While he suffered on the cross, he endured the wrath of God that we deserved. And thankfully, because of his death, we are set free from the law of sin and death. And now we are bound. To our husband. On the basis of faith. You see, Paul and the brother outside of law, which is us, the Gentiles. We are justified by faith, not by our works. So the gift of God, who is Jesus. This gift of God resides in our hearts, we are set free. And the sons who are set free are led by the Spirit. I'm gonna read Romans, chapter four. To show us the beauty of being free. We were un- un- we were unfaithful. We were adulterous, but because of God's redemption of us, we are now realizing that we. Belong to him. That he's our, he's our husband, he's our maker. So let me just go to Romans, chapter four, and then uh, Brother Scott. Will give us a beautiful review of Luke chapters twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, just bear with me as I get there. And I just want everybody to see. The beauty of our freedom with our husband. Okay. Let's go to um, I'm gonna actually go to verse nine. Of Romans, chapter four, verse nine. Um, going down to uh. A little further on past third verses, uh, verse thirteen. Now, we see Paul, who was a Pharisee of Pharisees, he knew the law inside, oh, he knew by the back of his. Like, like the back of his hand, but he realized, listen. In Philippians, chapter three, he said, hey, you know, everything, all the accolades, all I've accomplished in the fe- faith, um, in the flesh. All that I have is considered rubbish compared to knowing God. So I'm not relying on. My, um, on the righteousness righteousness that's attained from the works of the law. I now know that I have a righteousness based on having faith. In Christ, and I would like to know him and be in him. So the righteousness that I receive is by faith. It's not by the works of the law. So let's read this. Romans, chapter four, verse nine. Is this blessedness only for the circumcised or also for the uncircumcised? We have been saying that Abraham's faith was credited to him as righteousness. Under what circumstances was it credited? Was it after he was circumcised or before? It was not after, but before. And he received circumcision as a sign, a seal of the righteousness that he had by faith. While he was still uncircumcised. So then, he is the father of all who believe. That have not been circumcised in order that righteousness might be credited to them. And he is then also the father of the circumcised, who not only are circumcised, but also follow the footsteps of the faith. That our father Abraham had before he was circumcised. It was not through the law that Abraham and his offspring received the promise that he would be heir of the world. But through the righteousness that comes by faith. For if those who depend on the law are heirs, faith means nothing. And the promise is worthless. Because the law brings wrath. Where there's no law, there's no transgression. So we see that Christ brought an end to the law of sin and death. As it's written in first Corinthians, chapter uh fifteen, it says this, the um. Uh, the sting of sin is death and the power of death is the law. So every time you and I have sinned, when we were under the law, sin was magnified. It showed that we can never escape because the deeds of the um body, that the sinful deeds of the body. Shows that we deserve death. So thankfully, by the grace of God, we have Jesus here. Our Lord and King, died in us, us, our place. So as God, he redeemed us and as man, he suffered the penalty of the law of sin and death for us. So that's a beautiful demonstration of a faithful husband to his bride, us. Again, if you wanna raise a hand or. Um, that you wanna get our attention, feel free to ask. This is what it's all about. We here to break bread together. And um, if there's any discussions, any discuss- um, concerns that you would like to express. Um, please do so, but um, if not, we will proceed further with um, Brother Scott's review. Of Luke, chapter twenty-three and Luke, chapter twenty-four.
Thank you, brother. Okay, and thank you for that fine delivery. Of the introduction to the book of Numbers and just to put a little um. If I may be allowed to say, a little tale to that um. Introduction first, can everyone hear me uh, pretty well?
Yeah, not unfair, not unfair.
Okay, so again, as Brother Linden, all I'm pretty much is. Sound much uh, like an echo chamber to what he said. Um, and just to see if I could um, put a little additions in there. Uh, the English title of Numbers comes from the two senses that are central features of this book, which takes place in chapters one. And chapters twenty-six. And just gonna go over that just really, really quick. This is Numbers, chapter one, and I've taken out excerpts, starting at verse sixteen. These were the ones chosen from the congregation, the chiefs of their ancestral tribes, the heads of the clans of Israel. And just wanna move down and just capture some of those names, some of the names such as Reuben, Simeon, Gad. Judah, Ishikar, Zebulon, Ephraim and Manasseh. Now Ephraim and Manasseh are from Joseph. And um, I'll get back to that in just a, just a second. Benjamin, Dan, Asher and Napto. Now, if you, okay, let me be fair to say. That one of the names that are missing is Levi. And Levi, not to say that he was replaced, but. Their portion was not necessary in this transaction, but it still makes up the twelve tribes of Israel. The interesting thing about this number of the twelve tribes of Israel, as we move from Genesis all the way to Revelation. The number remains the same, even though there were additions and subtractions. Now, just let me um, touch on this really, really quickly. The sons of Jacob told him fourteen. Now y'all are probably saying, Brother Scott, uh, you say you're almost in your sixties and you don't know how to count. The scripture says twelve sons of Israel. We get to number fourteen. Well, Jacob, as a patriarch, he adopted Joseph's two sons. Which were Manasseh and Ephraim. So that's why throughout the history of the Bible, that number of twelve remains consistent. It remains consistent, because like I said, there were additions and there were subtraction, but it all. Always remains faithful and adding up to the number twelve. Now, one of the reasons why I brought that to your attention, because you've had throughout the history of the world. And even here in our latter times of the twentieth and twenty-first century, there are those who. Wrongfully, wrongfully called themselves the children of Israel. Um, they actually say that they replaced the children of Israel. Now, please understand that the children of Israel, even in this present day of August, twenty twenty-four. Are put to the side as a national whole. As a national whole, they are yes, put to the side, but they are not forgot, uh, they're not forgotten. And you can get that um, history or that information from our beautiful book of Romans. Romans will explain to you that they have been blinded, they have been put to the side, but they are not forgotten. Uh, that, that old saying, gone but not forgotten. Well, in this case, the children of Israel are not even gone. And they're not even forgotten. They have just been put to the side because of their disobedience. Now, we're gonna get to this book um, sometime in the future. The book of Jonah is one of the most beautiful, four chapters long, but one of the most beautiful books of the Bible. Because Jonah, in those four chapters, gives you a, 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 a picture of. A Hebrew and the world. You see, when God told Jonah to go to the land of Nineveh, Jonah refused, he rebelled, God put him to the side. When Jonah was put to the side, those men that were on his ship, they were pagan worldly Gentile men. While Jonah was being put to the side, they came in and got salvation. So you take that small picture and put that on a worldwide scale, and that's what you have today. While the children of Israel are put to the side, remember they're not um, removed from God's kingdom. While they are put to the side, we Gentiles are gaining salvation every day. Then, when that number that only God knows is filled, then he's going to go back for his children, Israel. So please understand that the children, the church, as it's been taught throughout the years, the church does not replace Israel. If anything, the church is just added to Israel. Again, we can look at it like the adoption of a child. When you go adopt a child, you don't remove. You don't remove your original children. No, you just make them an addition. So that's where the children of Israel are. They're in a state of being, again, put to the side while we. And again, I like to personalize it in case anyone get offended. Me as a Gentile, I'm being brought in while the children of Israel are put to the side. But again, please understand. That throughout the history of the world, there have been um, Israelites or Jews. That have come graciously into God's kingdom. Remember, with the exception of Luke, the twelve apostles, they are Israelites. They are Jews, and the apostle Paul. So they got salvation, they'll be um, with us in in God's glorious kingdom. So I didn't mean to um. So I didn't mean to um, go on that um, uh, too long. I just wanted to give that uh, brief history. The book of Numbers has the same relevance of life itself, because God is gathering in a specific. And actually, an exact number of Gentiles into his kingdom. Some say that the fullness of the Gentiles means as many as will believe or the complete number. Once again, Romans chapter eleven verse twenty-five, why would not brethren, that you should be ignorant of this mystery? That you be wise in your own conceit, that blindness in part has happened to Israel until the fullness of the Gentiles be come in. In addition, as the children of Israel being gathered together in um, gathered together in Numbers for a physical war. We two Gentiles are being gathered together for a spiritual warfare. Against the foe, the enemy of our salvation, the world, the flesh and the devil. So, the book of Numbers has been a greatly overlooked book as a whole. But as we can see, or we will see, let me put that. As we will see, as we're developing the book of Numbers, we will see that it's very relevant. And it also has current application. Again, part of that numbering. Of the children of Israel in the book of Numbers. Were those who God was gathering unto himself. There were those who were faithful and they got. In hook, line and sinker. And then there were those who were not faithful, and they had to die outside of God's favor. The same applies to us today. Listen to John chapter three verse sixteen. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes will have everlasting life. Those who do not believe, and I'm paraphrasing for remainder, those who do not believe will perish. So again, as an Israelite, so a Gentile. You don't believe, the children of Israel didn't believe during their wilderness journey. And they got cut off. So we as Gentiles, if we do not believe, we will be cut off as well. Um, and just a quick biography on Numbers, its author is Moses. Its intended audience is Israel, but we as Gentiles can benefit from it as well. It was written approximately fourteen fifty to fourteen ten B.C., in the same time period as Genesis. It was written in the vast wilderness of the Sinai region, as well as lands just south and east of Canaan. During Israel's vast wanderings. Um, as part of their preparations, the Lord gave strict guidelines to the Israelites regarding purity in the camp. He wanted them to have a lifestyle distinct from the nations around them. Beloved, beloved. Oh, it's really hard for me to contain my emotions when it comes to Bible study. Because this is God's love letter to me personally. God has set me aside. Brother Linden gave a beautiful explanation of this weeks ago. Sanctus, uh, 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 sanctity or sanctify, that means set apart. And as we have learned and will continue to learn, that there were old pots and pans during Moses' day and his ministry. And God had Moses set those aside for God's kingdom, so they were sanctified or made holy. I'm an old pot and pan, an old beat up Gentile, but God set me aside for his kingdom. He has made me holy and righteous in him. Outside of him, as Brother Linden just said moments ago. Yo soy nada, that's Spanish for I am nothing. So beloved brethren, again. God is setting us, he doesn't pull us out of the world for us to continue to think like the world. Let me just give you a quick example. There's a young lady I know that she said that her and her son got baptized. Listen to me, please. She said her and her son got baptized. Okay, so when you get baptized, baptism is a symbol of being buried. No, dying, being buried and being raised in newness of life. Do you know that this same woman says to me, oh boy. She says to me, well, Brother Scott, cause her and I were having a discussion. We were having, and I have to call it, we were having a heated discussion. And she says to me, well, Brother Scott. Jesus, and I pray that I'm not being blasphemous when I repeat what she says, and if I am, may my Father forgive me and may he correct me. So that I'll be straight for the future. She's saying that at the day of judgment now. This is found in Matthew chapter twenty-five, when the scripture says Jesus will gather all the nations before him. She's saying that the day of judgment, Jesus should give her homosexual family members a break. Listen to the core of Numbers again. The Lord gave strict guidelines to the Israelites regarding purity in the camp. Do uh, beloved. Thought I was talking to my wife, my wife and, and children for a minute there. I'll start to call y'all dudes. Beloved. God wants us to have purity in our camp. He wants us to have a lifestyle distinct from the nations around us. Now, we don't have to go outside of America to know that America is a very godless. Corrupt, defiling country. And God wants us as Christians to be different from them. So dare you say I got baptized, but yet Jesus should still give my worldly family members, if they die in their sins, a break? God wants us to have standards of righteous living, and he will just deal decisively with sin and false teaching. This young lady is promoting false teaching, because she has her children. Thinking that Jesus is going to let homosexuality slide right into his glorious kingdom. Not so. Beloved brethren, the Israelites, uh, some of them were prevented from entering the promised land because of their unbelief. Listen to John chapter three eighteen, listen to John chapter three eighteen. Cause that's found in the New Testament, but it perfectly harmonizes what's found in the Old Testament. He that believes upon Jesus is not condemned, but he that believes not is condemned already. Because he has not believed in the name of the only son, the only begotten son of God. The Israelites were prevented from any, entering the promised land because of their unbelief. We will not get into God's glorious kingdom, we will not get into paradise, we will not get into heaven if we have unbelief. And beloved, a closing thought that I would like to embark upon is this. We should not let ourselves or others discourage us as we're moving toward God's kingdom. Remember, Brother Linden briefly touched on the twelve spies, ten brought back an unfaithful report, two brought back the faithful report. So, it was uh, what uh, I'm stealing a line from Tom Cruise's movie, The Minority Report. It was a minority report that had God's favor. So beloved brethren, yes, in the world, there are giants. There are giants on the outside. Remember, I just said the world, the flesh and the devil. So you gotta understand that we have giants within our own flesh, and yes, there are giants on the outside. But we are kingdom overcomers. Greater is he that is in we than he. That is in the world. So beloved brethren, we're serving the true and living God of which. One with him is the majority. And also, as we're going through Numbers, we'll find these beautiful, beautiful verses of scripture that many of us are very familiar with. And that's found in Numbers chapter six, verses twenty-four through twenty-six. Listen to these glorious words of which I hope brings sunshine to your night, this Saturday night. Will bring a ray of hope in your life and joy to your soul. The Lord bless thee and keep thee, the Lord make his face shine upon thee and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee and give you peace. Beloved brethren, the book of Numbers, a yet another fantastic undiscovered gem from the Old Testament. Is what we have begun in our journey tonight. Beloved brethren, to bring Luke chapter twenty-four, Brother Linden already brought it to a close last week, when uh, last week's Saturday. And just to bring some um, additional points of review. And some um, additional highlights that we were able to gather and ascertain from that beautiful book. Of the Bible, Luke, y'all probably saying, Brother Scott, do you have a memory lapse? You call every book of the Bible beautiful. And this is true, because all sixty-six books are sixty-six love letters from my father to me. Both correcting me, chastising me, as well as loving. So yes, every book you hear me favorably say is uh, my beautiful book of the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation. Beloved brethren, as we're looking at Luke chapter twenty-three, verses one through three. I entitled this, Christ the King, Savior of the nations and upholds the law. Now, the multitude was falsely um, accusing him. And their false accusation of our Lord was one of them, was that he was trying to um. The word I'm trying to look for, subvert the nations or, or subvert the government. Not so. Listen to what, what false accusations and claims that they'll land. As I read Luke chapter twenty-three. Verses one through three. And the whole multitude of them rose and led him unto Pilate. And they began to accuse him, saying, we found this fellow perverting the nation and forbidding to give tribute to Caesar, saying that he himself is Christ a king. Okay, did our Lord. Try to pervert the nation, or was he here attempting to save the nations? No, he was there attempting to save the nations. As far as giving tribute to Caesar, what did he say to his disciples? And I'm paraphrasing, which one of you have a coin? Whose super inscription is on it? And it said Caesar's. And what did our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ clearly say? He said, render to Caesar the things that belong to Caesar, that is money, taxes and all that. But he also said, render to God that which belongs to God. So I don't see him trying to um. Forbid the people, and you know. Just, 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 just briefly. The churches of today should be paying taxes. The churches of today should be paying taxes, yes. Because that's the standard that our Lord set back then. Now, remember. He was talking to his disciples, he was talking to his apostles, and he clearly said, render to the things Caesar's. Rend it to the things of God. So Caesar's, and let's just move it down to the American government, and let's be a little bit more specific. The IRS said you're supposed to pay your taxes. And I do not personally feel that a church has a right not to pay taxes. Why not? You're collecting uh, uh, billions of dollars from the congregation, why shouldn't you pay taxes? Taxes is to um, uphold and support our government. It provides for our schools, our roads. Um, our law enforcement, um, our property and other uh, fine entities. And yes, I'll use the word fine entities, uh, entities, because this is what taxes do. Taxes has provided me an education, taxes are currently providing education for my children. So yes, I believe in paying taxes. Absol- absolutely, because this is what our Lord has set forth. And I'm not saying um. What was I gonna say? I'm not saying that um, man, I lost my thought. But anyway, we should pay taxes. I enjoy paying my taxes because I benefit from it. And that should be the standard of what a Christian should live by, to uphold the law and do that which is right in the sight of God. Now, as far as him making the claim of being king, I love what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said. Listen to verse three, and Pilate asked him, saying, art thou the king of the Jews? And Jesus answered him, said, you say it. Beloved brethren, so now I'll ask the question. Is our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ king of the Jews? Uh, no. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is king of the world. He doesn't limit it just to the Jews. He's the king of the world. Listen to Psalms chapter two verse six. This is the words of our Father, in whom art in heaven, hallowed be his name. Psalms chapter two verse six, yet have I set my king upon my holy hill of Zion. That's God making the installation of his king. Listen to Matthew chapter sixteen, verses thirteen, fifteen and seventeen, of once again. Identifying who our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, by the mouths of one of his apostles. But he was energized by the Holy Spirit. Matthew sixteen, thirteen, fifteen through seventeen. And Jesus answered and said unto him, blessed art thou, Simon, and Boadua. For flesh and blood have not revealed it unto thee, but my Father, which is in heaven. Beloved brethren, God says of Jesus in Psalms two, that he is king. So beloved brethren, God said it, I believe it, and that settles it. So again, listen to Ezekiel chapter twenty-one, verses twenty-six and twenty-seven. This is God speaking again. Thus saith the Lord God, remove the diadem, take off the crown, this shall not be the same. Exalt him that is low and abase him that is high. I will overturn, overturn, overturn it, it shall be no more until he, this is speaking of Jesus. Come whose right it is, and I will give it to him. So King Charles, who's wearing the cow, uh, his crown, oh, he's gonna have to give that up. No, he's his king as long as he's alive. Yeah, what was the key word? Long as he is what? Alive. So when he dies, he's gonna pass that crown on to uh, William. And when William dies, he's passing it on to Archie, and it's gonna be passed on so and so and so and so and so. It's gonna be continually passed on until who? Until our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ comes in and takes the throne, which rightfully belongs to him. Verse four of Luke chapter twenty-three. Pilate said to the chief priests and to the people, I find no fault in this man. Beloved brethren, let me ask you all a question, and be honest in your answering. This is for self-examination. And if your answer has to be altered or changed tonight, be willing to have it altered or changed. But do you find fault in Jesus? And I know that everyone in this Bible study has a resounding no to say, and I'll join y'all and say no as well. But you say if a man who was faultless, why is he hated so? You know why he's hated so? Because Jesus' life says you have to make a choice. God says in Deuteronomy, I hold out before you the blessing and the malediction. You choose. You know, I argued, and this was as recent as, we're in August. I would say the beginning of this, of this year. I've argued with people about doing what's right and doing, and doing what's right and stop doing what's wrong and so on and so forth and yada. And yada, 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 as science is. But then I remember, God says, I hold out before you the blessing and the malediction. He said, you choose. He didn't say I'll choose it for you. He didn't say I'm gonna make you do what's right. He said, you choose. So if you wanna choose hell and destruction, who am I to stop you? Now, let's, 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 let's keep it on a level of, of, of being real. If God forbid, my children said, daddy, I don't wanna live in your house anymore, I'm going out there in the world. And I'm gonna get involved in sex, drugs and rock and roll. And I don't care what you say. Now, yes, I'll roll up my sleeves and say, no, you ain't. Oh, no, you not. You're gonna have to knock me down before you're able to walk out that door, but no, you ain't. Then you probably say, well, wait, Brother Scott, you just said God's not gonna force man to do what's right, but you're gonna try to force your children to do what's right? Do you love your children more than God loves mankind? Nope. Nope, 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 no, I don't. No, I don't. God has the ultimate love, tried, tested and true. So why would you try to force your children to do what's right, where God is not forcing us to do what's right? Because of my human weakness or my human frailty, I'll try to make my children do what's right. Knowing that if they go out there and do what's wrong, their future will be filled with jeopardy, dangers. Death and destruction, like the prodigal son we just learned about not too long ago. He went out there and he was partying like it was nineteen ninety-nine, then he found himself eating out of the pigpen. I don't want my children to do that. So Scott, you saying God wants his people to do that? Nope. Because he gives warning. He says blessings if you obey me. Remember, let's tie it all together. I hold out before you blessings and malediction. Blessings if you obey me, cursings if you don't. So God tells you. So God tells you, if you jump over that fence, that's at the edge of the cliff of the Grand Canyon, you will die. If you stay on this side of the fence, you will live. Now, if you're ready to jump, if you go take a run and start to jump, God is not gonna put his hand in the way and keep you from, no, 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 no. If my children do it, sure, I'll tackle them down to the ground. What makes the difference is that first of all, God is perfect, all-knowing, and all-being. You see, I'm forcing my children to do what's right. They may do it out of fear, or say, I don't wanna hurt my dad's feelings. Or they wanna hurt my dad, period. But God doesn't force us to love Him. You see, my children's love to me is false. Because they wanna do what they wanna do, and I'm attempting to stop them. God's love for me is real because he says to me, Scott, you can go out there and sex, drugs, and rock and roll. But when I say, No, uh-uh, Father, I'm not, uh-uh, I'm not gonna hurt you, no. Because I love you too much. He didn't force me. He didn't coerce me. He didn't put a gun to my head and make me do it. Or, or make me, or keep me from doing it. I didn't do it because I love Him that much. So if you wanna compare notes and apples and oranges, God's love for us is far greater than our love for our children. Because yes, I'll try to put a hurt on my children if they go out there into the world. Them stopping is not because they love me. Them stopping is because they're afraid of me. God will not do that to us. So which one's love is more genuine? My children's love to me? Or my love to God? You gotta say, My love to God is more genuine than my children's love to me. So again, beloved brethren, we do the things that we do because we truly love God. And he offers us blessings and malediction. He allows us to make the choice. Verse 12 of Luke chapter 23, a very interesting, uh, uh, subject says, In the same day Pilate and Herod were made friends together, for before they were at enmity between themselves. Uh, there's a saying, The enemy of my enemy, the enemy of my enemy is my friend. Beloved brethren, Pilate and Herod were mortal enemies. But their hatred for Jesus drew them together, and they became the best of buds, the best of pals, because they had a mutual hatred for the Lord and Savior of life. Beloved brethren, if you find that your homeboy, or your homegirl, your husband, or your wife, or your friends, when they come to find out you're really sincere about what thus saith the Lord, and they start hating you, or joining in others to hate you, understand that this is all energized by the devil. And again, as I mentioned earlier, please do not let, not even yourself, or let the outside influences cause you to turn from God and turn from Jesus. Please. Because at the end of the day, and I'm not being brutal in my statement. At the end of the day, your family will no longer be your family if either one of y'all go to hell. But your family will continue to be your family if all of y'all go into paradise in glory together. My wife, she'll become my sister. My children will become my brothers and sisters. So you stand right and stand up for what's right in God's sight. And let that picture that you're leaving, uh, leaving, be something for them to turn around and say, Hey, you know what? Let me get on the Christ bandwagon, because this show looks like a good wagon to me. Verses 25 and 26, beloved brethren. They wanted released to them Barabbas. Now, Barabbas was known, listen to verse 25 of Luke 23. And he released, this is Pilate, released unto them, him that for dishon and murder was cast into prison, whom they had desired, but he delivered Jesus to their will, and their will was for Jesus to be crucified. Beloved, this happened 2,000 years ago. The application of that is as real and as true today as can possibly be. And what I mean by that is this. Jesus died on the cross. I was released from that death. He died in my place so that I can have life and have it more abundantly. Now, the world, they wanna be with the liars, the cheaters, the murderers, um, this, the lawbreakers. When you come to your job, when you go out in the public square, remember, I told y'all the story that I picked up a woman in a, in my, in the assessment ride vehicle. And when she was getting in the car, oh, I gotta call your superiors. You're the nicest thing since peanut butter and jelly. Oh, my gosh, oh, you're so wonderful. She sang my praises. I'm surprised it didn't hit top, uh, the, uh, the top one on the, on, on, on the billboard. Soon as we got settled in, and I put on my Christian radio, you're talking about, um, a transformation. She went from singing my praises to cussing me in her native language. I couldn't even understand the language that she was saying. But she got on the phone, fuming at the mouth. When I got back to my, well, not that day, sometime later, when I got to work, my boss called me into the office. He said, Scott, do you remember the day that you picked up so-and-so, and you was playing your Christian? I said, Yeah, boss, I remember. He said, Well, she wrote in a letter to complain about you, complain about your behavior. Complain about, complain about my behavior. So my boss, he was like, Scott, I know you, I know how you all, listen, continue doing what you do. But when someone doesn't wanna hear your, your Christian, um, themes and, and, and anthems, just, just turn it down. So beloved brethren, that woman who pretended to be my friend was my enemy. And who was her enemy, which was actually her friend, because remember, beloved, Satan is the enemy of mankind. I don't care if you're doing his will, the Illuminati, the selling your soul for the devil so he can make it. He still hates you. So you, as a worldly person, will be a friend to someone who's your enemy, but y'all are mutually agreeing, because y'all both don't hate each other as much as y'all hate our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So please don't get it twisted. Please do not get it twisted. Beloved brethren, as we're moving on to verses 39 through 43 of Luke chapter 23. The thief on his deathbed got forgiveness of sins. Now, beloved brethren, I wanna say this, I wanna say this kindly, but I wanna say it forcefully. Please do not live your life. Let me give you an example. Please do not live your life partying like it's 1999. And your doctor says, your doctor says, You have six months to live. And you get to month five and a half, and you got two weeks left to live, and then you start living for our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. No, don't do that. Because that's a heart of deceit. Why? Because let's just say miraculously, you live for another 60 years. What are you gonna do with that 60 years? Are you gonna continue giving it to Christ? Or are you gonna go back to partying and being in the world? The thief on the cross, the reason why his was so genuine, because, and I'm just giving y'all a timeframe, so you can get this in your mind of, of, of what transacted. It was three o'clock. At three o'clock, the same thief that got saved, he was bad-mouthing our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ at three o'clock. At about 3:15, he had a change of heart. He had a serious change of heart. By 3:20, he was asking our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ to remember him when he comes into his kingdom. And our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ promised him that he would be in his kingdom. At 3:30, he died. The thief on the cross died. So he will be in God's kingdom, because he was sincerest, he was sincerely and genuinely repented of the behavior that he had just a few moments ago. Now, how does that relate to you and I? That relates to you and I as follows. We can be out there having a high old time, sinning, and just getting down, and not even thinking about today, tomorrow, God of Jesus Christ. We might come home that day, and we might have a, 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 a transaction with the Lord Jesus Christ. And by the next morning, you can be a seriously changed person. It works that beautifully, and it works that well. So beloved brethren, don't give up hope on any of your family members, relatives, friends, and concerns, who might be out there just getting buck wild in the world. Continue to pray for them in your heart. Continue to speak to them about the Lord. I don't wanna, look, look! I don't wanna hear anything about God of Jesus Christ. Respect that. When they say shed it, you zip it and you walk away. Because one of two things will happen, not a third, one of two things will happen. Either they repent and come to their senses, or they'll die in their sins. Beloved, moving on to verses 44 and 45. Again, we have another celestial phenomenon. It was 12:00 midday. Now, today at about 12 o'clock, I was looking up in the sky, and I was, no, no, yesterday, I take that back, yesterday. And I was saying, Man, it's a beautiful, beautiful day. 12 o'clock, noon, high. Well, on that day that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, 12 o'clock, noon, high, it turned dark. As dark as, if any of y'all look out y'all window right now, yes, it was that dark. At 12 o'clock, midday high in Jerusalem. Um, ancient, um, reports have, have, actually secular findings have confirmed that that day, it was a worldwide phenomenon that it was dark from 12 noon to 3:00 PM. So this is just not coming from scripture. We have secular history to confirm that it was dark that day. Yes, baby, the whole, the whole world was dark at that time period, when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was dying on the cross. This is not, I don't want y'all to take this to the bank. This is just my own personal saying. I personally feel that the sun could not look at its creator dying. So that's why it just shut its eyes or went dark, so to speak. So again, beloved brethren, do not make that say, Well, that's what happened, Brother Scott swore. No, no, no. We know that God darkened the sun. But that's just something that I say. The sun closes eyes to his creator dying on Calvary's cross. Verses 46 through 48, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said, Father, into thy hands I commend my spirit. Beloved brethren, I want y'all to know this. That Jesus going to Calvary's cross wasn't an afterthought. In other words, Adam and Eve fell in the Garden of Eden, so God had to scramble to get him or to get man salvation. No, 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 not the case. Beloved, beloved, listen to what's found in the last book of the Bible, the book of Revelation. Listen to what's said concerning our salvation, and how long ago this was put into place. Revelation chapter 13, verse eight. And all that dwell upon the earth shall worship him. Now, the scriptures before helps us to understand who this him is. This is the, um, the false Christ, the antichrist, the beast. All those that dwell upon the earth shall worship the beast, whose names are not written in the book of life of the Lamb, and we know the Lamb is our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, slain from the foundation of the world. So in other words, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was our sacrifice before Adam and Eve were even created. Let me bring that down to shoe leather. What that's saying is this. God had me, again, I'm personalizing. If any one of y'all here wants to personalize it, that'll be fine. I'm not personalizing it for you, because I don't wanna put words, I don't wanna put my words in y'all's mouths. But let me personalize it. God had me on his heart before my mother was even born. That blesses me, because it says to me this. Scott, go and sin no more. That's what it says to me personally. Because my God was thinking about having me in his kingdom before my great-grandparents were even born. I hope that statement blesses y'all as well. I really hope that blesses y'all, to know that God loved you and had preparations for you to be in his kingdom long before you were even, even born. Beloved brethren, as we move over to Luke chapter 24 and looking at verse one. Now, upon the first day of the week, very early in the morning, they came upon a sepulchre, bringing upon spices, which they had prepared, and certain others with them. And they found the stone rolled away from the sepulchre. They entered in and found not the body of our Lord Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, we just read that our Lord died, was buried in Joseph of Arimathea's tomb. And on the third day, he rose. All of that says to you and I that our sins are forgiven. They were cast into the sea of forgetfulness. And remember, just to, like Brother Lyndon was touching upon, just a brief, uh, picture from the book of Leviticus. In the book of Leviticus, there were two goats. One that took the sins of the people, and that goat was slain. After that goat was slain, Aaron then placed his hands upon that second live goat and sent that, that second live goat away into the wilderness, never to be found, or never to be, um, um, uh, uncovered, or, or, or brought back. Those two goats represented our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. When he was on Calvary's cross, he took our sins on his body, and he died. When he was buried and rose, he was that second goat of which that sins, our sins were cast away into the wilderness, unto the sea of forgetfulness. What that's saying is, our sins are remembered against us no more. So beloved brethren, with that in mind, please reduce your records of sin. Oh, Brother Scott, yo, you just, you just wrecked, you just, you just wrecked my entire program. Dude, just this week, I committed a sin. So now you mean to tell me this is held against me? I'm not gonna have a, 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 a good righteous walk with the Lord Jesus Christ? Beloved brethren, I'm glad that you asked that question. Listen to what First John says. Listen to these beautiful words. I'm not, I'm not even gonna answer this for y'all. I'm gonna let somebody who's a proven man of God answer you. Listen to First John, chapter two, verse one. Listen to First John, chapter two, verse one. My little children, these things write I unto you, that you sin not. Okay, you was at Bible study last week, Saturday. But in between last week, Saturday, and tonight, you sinned. Okay, so listen. Please turn down the music, lower the TV, and tell the children to settle down. My little children, these things write I unto you, that you sin not. And if any- And if any man sinned, we have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ the Righteous." So, that sin that you committed this week, you just go to the Father, and you say, "Father, this week, after that wonderful Bible study that I had last Saturday with Brother Scott and Brother Lyndon, on Tuesday, I got involved in sex, drugs, and rock and roll. Forgive me." Y'all remember what we learned in Luke just last week? We said, "If your brother sins against you seven times in a day, and seven times a day, and then seven times a day, he comes to you and asks you to forgive him, that you are to forgive him, you think God's going to give you a mandate that he himself does not follow?" So you go to the Father and say, "God, I sin." And don't put it on anybody else. Don't say, "I was broke." Don't say, "I drank some alcohol and I was drunk." Don't say, "I was mad at my mother, my father, my brother, my sister, my husband, my wife, my girlfriend." Don't, don't, don't. Say, "God, I sinned. I rebelled against you. I transgressed your laws. Please forgive me." And John just promised us that we have a lawyer with the Father, Jesus Christ the Righteous, and he will forgive you if you would but repent. So please, beloved brethren, it's not too late. Please just repent, and our Father will bless you. And just moving on down to the close of verse 51. Our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, ascended. Let me read that beautiful picture to you that's found in Acts, chapter 1, verses 9 through 11. Now, Mark, all of the Gospels, with the exception of John, wrote about his ascension. Listen, listen to these beautiful words by the additional writer of the book of Acts, Luke, as he gives this beautiful, beautiful picture of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Acts, chapter 1, verses 9 through 11. "And when he, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, has spoken these things, while they beheld, he was taken up, and the cloud received him out of their sight. And while they looked steadfastly toward heaven as he went up, behold, two men stood by them in white apparel, which also said, 'You men of Galilee, why stand ye gazing up into heaven? This same Jesus, which is taken up for you into heaven, shall so come in like manner as you have seen him go into heaven.'" Beloved brethren, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, when he returns, all eyes will see him. And Luke helped us to appreciate that. Not having a person say, "Oh, he's here in Egypt," or, "No, he's there in Africa." "Oh, wait, he's in the Bronx," or, "No, he's in Australia." No, 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 no. He's not going to be in a private setting or a private chamber where only a few can make the claim that he's returned. No. When our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, returns, all eyes will see him. All. Every eye on the face of this earth will see our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, that brings tonight's study to an end, and I would just like to give a closing thought. Brother Lyndon and I have made, if you want to call it a confession, then we'll put it under the caption of a confession. Brother Lyndon and I made the confession that we're not only quote-unquote teachers, we're also students. And like I said, when Brother Lyndon's at the front of the class, I'm sitting in the front row seat. Brother Lyndon said, "Brother Scott, when you're at the front of the class, I'm sitting in the front row seat." So what that's saying is, we are students as well as teachers. And these studies, let me tell you, they are blessing my soul, coming and going, up and down, in and out, left and right, backwards and forwards. I pray, I pray that these studies are blessing y'all as well, and that y'all are preparing y'all hearts, y'all lives, y'all families, friends, relatives, and concerns, that y'all are preparing all whom you come in contact with to one day spend eternity with our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, in his glorious kingdom. Because beloved brethren, please understand this. Please. And I have to be brutal in these my closing remarks. If God, if Jesus, if the Holy Spirit is not your friend, then friendship with the world is immanity with God, and you will unfortunately have to join the devil in the lake of fire, which burns day and night forever. Please be mindful of that, and please make your decision today to serve the true and living God and Father of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and be led by his Holy Spirit. That brings tonight's study to a close. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Even as I say to my family, even if it does not pertain to tonight's study. Is there anything that are on any one of you beloved ones' hearts and minds that you would like to discuss? As Brother Lyndon would say, the floor is open. Again, it does not even have to pertain to tonight's study. Is there been something on your mind, a particular scripture, something out of Genesis, Revelation, Psalms, Proverbs, Nahum, Haggai, Micah, that you would like to throw at us real quick? And if we're not able to give you the full answer of it, being that we have a time constraint, then we will absolutely make sure that we get it to you in this week. So once again, are there any questions, comments, or concerns concerning tonight's Bible study, or anything that's spirit-related that you guys would like to touch upon with us? Even if it's something that you would put in what was called a season of thankfulness. Is there anything, beloved ones?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Mimi.
Well, I'm thankful for meeting you, and I'm thankful for being able to find a Bible study. I've been looking for somewhere to do Bible study for a while, so I'm very grateful for being able to meet you and join in on this.
Thank you, Mimi. And with that window, I would like to tell the story about... This is my coworker, Mimi. I would like to tell the story about that. When I was going into work a couple of Sundays ago, and as I was parking, the Spirit, and I won't even put this on my mind, the Spirit said, "Ask her, do she want to join Bible study?" And sure enough, I went to her and I said, "Ma'am, we do Bible study Saturday nights. Would you like to join?" And I'm adding a little bit of extra frosting on the cake when I say this, but she was saying, "Hallelujah, yeah." And again, I'm just exaggerating, but she said yes. And you see, she was one who followed up with her words. Now, that relationship, or that association, or that initiation led to something else. At the end of the day, when I was leaving to go home from work, she just said, and you know, we exchanged names, she said, "Mr. Scott, do you know anyone..." No, she, "Do you know where I can buy a car?" And I said, "Hallelujah, praise the Lord." I said, "My older brother, he sells cars." So I put them two together, and lo and behold, she got her dream car. But more importantly, she says she's having her dream of wanting to, as you just heard her say, have a Bible study to fellowship with, to be able to grow in her relationship with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So again, beloved brethren, as I said to y'all, said to y'all in times past, when you're engaging in the gospel, if you can't do it with your feet, I mean, if you can't do it with your teeth, do it with your feet. And in this case, I didn't do it with my feet. I actually did it with my teeth, and it's blessing this young lady, Mimi, who has now joined our Bible study, and she's saying that the studies are really blessing her. So thank you, Mimi, for bringing that to the table, and may God wonderfully watch over you and bless you and your household.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Is there anyone else, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, so we have no questions, comments, or concerns. That'll bring tonight's study once again to a close. And we're going to ask our lovely Sister Gail to carry us to the throne of mercy in a closing word of prayer. Before that, Lyndon, did you want to add anything?
I'm just, I'm well-fed right now. So I'm hoping that everybody's being well-fed, and again, we'll text any verses that we discussed tonight, and you can also go to YouTube, and we have these Bible study sessions put together, so you can listen and section off and at your leisure. So that's pretty much it, but God is good all the time.
Absolutely. And in the realm of Lyndon's modesty, because he's rather shy, brother, is his YouTube page, and it's his, you just type in the word Lyndon Mason. It's one word. And like he said, these studies that we have, you have them at your fingertip, your leisure. You can go over them. You can even listen to it after roughly Sunday, because Lyndon, I sent it to Lyndon, and then he gets it prepped and ready. So pretty much Monday of each week, you can listen to the studies, and as Lyndon said, he'll send me the scriptures, and I'll send y'all the scriptures. And as you're listening to the study, you can write down the scriptures. And again, this is all designed to see y'all in God's kingdom, as well as Brother Lyndon and I getting into God's kingdom. So without further ado, Sister Gail, can you please close us in prayer?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for this Bible study, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for the new addition, oh God. Bless Mimi right now, oh God. Let her continue to join with us, oh God. Give us all wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of your word, oh God. In the name of Jesus, touch the teachers right now, oh God. Illuminate them, oh God. Raise them up, oh God. In the name of Jesus, do it for your glory, Lord. Touch each and every one of the Bible study line, oh God. Give us a reverb word, oh God. Let us hide it in our heart that we sin not against you, oh God. In the name of Jesus, bless our families, oh God. In the name of Jesus, keep them safe and keep them saved, oh Lord. In the name of Jesus, do it for your glory, Lord. Take out everything that is unlike you and lead us in your way, oh God. We repent of all ungodly sins, known and unknown sins, presumption sins, secret faults, and everything not pleasing in your sight, oh God. Raise us up to be men and women of God. Seek your word and seek in your face, oh God. Have mercy on us, oh God. We are just men, oh God, and women, oh God. We just thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace on us, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for blessing our families. Keep us covered under the blood of Jesus, and let us get good rest for another day. We just thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sister. So you beloved ones, and to y'all's families, we're going to say good night, and may God's love and peace continue to watch over all of y'all and sustain y'all till we get together again. And again, from the Mason household, the Foster household, to y'all's household, we bid y'all love. We bid y'all good night.
All right, good night, everybody. God bless y'all. Love y'all.
Y'all as well. All right.